Hello? Are we on?
Yep.
All right. I'll call the meeting, the regular meeting, to order if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Griswold.
Here.
Mrs. Marberger.
Here.
Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Dr. Grease.
Here.
Dr. Meiser.
Here.
Ms. Ben Hutt.
Here.
All right, everybody is present. We are going to open this for comments. We have Lisa Smith, you're on the rosters, would you like to step forward, please?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Doherty, principals, teachers, and parents, thank you all for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Dr. Lisa Smith, and I'm a parent of seven children in this school system, two in high school, three in junior high, one at Memorial, and a special needs child at the Mentha Academy. My specialty is primary care, pediatrics, and pediatric mental health. I've addressed this board before in October. I have warned you of the consequences of continuing this farce of an education called remote learning. I and other parents and doctors have talked about the effects of the mental and social health of the kids, not to mention the health issues like an increase in obesity caused by a sedentary lifestyle. I, like others, have watched the board meetings with no mention of these issues during the discussion period, and there's been little debate about anything or good questions to the superintendent about why these things, this is not progressing quickly towards 100% in-person learning. Even though the facts say it should have happened a long time ago, you seem to think that two full days a week is enough, and I put "full" in quotes, we aren't even full days, and we had to beg for those. There's no reason why they could not have been full days anyway. You seem to think we don't have the capacity to know this. No meaningful discussion on why, and you have ignored the science and kept our kids out for way too long. I bet today we don't get any legitimate reason for keeping them out. Cleaning's not a legitimate reason, teachers not being vaccinated is not a legitimate reason, and you get extra money from the government for cleaning and keeping the schools open and keeping our kids educated. It's shameful. My daughter, who is 12, had a close friend commit suicide last month. She was 12. She needed the social support of her friends and teachers. You denied her this, and how many other kids are struggling? I know you have to care about this. I know you have to care about this. Seems like all this board and the superintendent have been caring about is vaccinating the teachers and keeping the teachers safe. These teachers are safe to return to class even without the vaccine, according to the CDC, but you will ignore that. You will ignore it. I have a child who's a Navy student that got all Fs last semester. He has autism, but he's really bright, he's in regular ed classes, he doesn't usually need a lot of help. He needed to be in class to be able to learn. He was denied that in January at his IEP. He's failing again. We had another meeting two weeks ago. I had to demand that he get his services he deserved, or I was going to seek legal consultation. You were turning a successful student into a failing student. How do you think that made him feel? How do you think it makes these kids feel that are failing when they do good in-person learning? How does that make them feel? He started back to four days last week because, what do you know, they found his spot. We don't have the luxury of being able to send our kids to private school, who, by the way, have been in class all year. They can be in class all year, but we can't. School systems our size can be in class all year, but we can't. Other kids can go to school, but our school can't. Space is not an issue when I don't see desks in the gym or the cafeteria, or in every space available being used for classes. It's shameful. Sitting in a gym with no fans, watching a ballgame, you ever be a parent standing outside watching through windows to see your kids play, or stream the video in the car? You know, people can be smart, they can social distance and wear masks in a gym or out on a field. They would be okay with their temps being taken and waivers if you would just let them. There are solutions to these problems, and I don't want to see anybody patting themselves on the back for any little progress that you make. It is not enough. I'm calling on 100% full return to classes immediately. Full days, not short days. It is ridiculous to keep up this charade that people are not safe at school. The facts say the opposite. Do you ever think about what the facts are? I am calling for you not to renew the contract of our superintendent, who has not proven that she can handle this situation with districts the same size have. I am also encouraging every board member that's up for reelection to not run again. And for those of you that are remaining, to resign. You have not proven yourselves as leaders or good advocates for our children, you are out of touch with our children and with their needs. Again, it's shameful. Now, let's fix it.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Cindy Wagner. I teach science at the junior high school. I know I run a risk speaking here tonight, especially since I spoke at the November board meeting, that you will think that I don't like kids, that I don't want the kids in my room, and that I am just flat against having students in the building, and that is not true. If you remember, in November, my concern was the high number of COVID cases in the area would cause us to shut down and disrupt the continuity and care. I believe we know how that turned out. I was perfectly happy to begin the calendar year with students in the room when our cases were lower. I am very happy with that. I livestream my classes, I have students log in, and they see me four days a week. I'm here today to discuss the move to combine the cohorts. Quick change there, originally I had said after spring break, but I understand there is a proposal to start even earlier, and essentially bringing 100% of our students in the building, and again, a change, to five days a week. Doing that, I believe, ignores the CDC guidelines, even the ones posted this week. Our superintendent has joined other superintendents and lawmakers asking to be allowed to increase sports attendance to 25% capacity and a six-foot social distance, yet at the same time is proposing to increase our daily capacity to 100%, reducing the social distance in our school buildings. The capacity of our cafeteria and this room is 50 people. Currently, under the hybrid plan, our students at the junior high are assigned to one of three 30-minute lunch periods, except that time is actually cut in half. They get 15 minutes to eat their lunch and 15 minutes to sit in the hall and do work. We are using every available space, hallways, the forum, the cafeteria, with half of our students. I do not know how this is going to work when we bring in 100% of our students. Um, hang on a minute. With a population of over 700, lunch service would need 210 minutes to complete a lunch service. That could mean bringing lunch, beginning lunch service at 10:15 in the morning for some students, for their 15 minutes, and others would be ending their lunch from 1:30 to 1:45. That would be 25 minutes before they leave for home. But these schedules aren't even set yet because we don't know how we're going to do it. So those schedules are not set, and now there's a new proposal to move up that starting date to before spring break. The specials' schedules are not set yet at the elementaries of when they're going to have classes with the PE, the art, the music, the special ed classes, and the times for pull-out services, which are required by law. Those are not set yet, those have not been able to be scheduled yet, and we're wanting to increase and move that date up when we didn't even have it ready for a four-day-a-week to start after spring, or after spring break. All of this takes time, and I know it doesn't seem like we are working, but we are. We are working super hard on scheduling and meeting the needs of our kids and planning and delivering education. I understand that other districts who have total populations similar to ours have been able to be back to full student attendance, but I ask, what are their class sizes? How many students do they have in a room? What are the physical measurements of those rooms? And how are they managing lunches? Some of those districts are only going half-days and sending students home with sack lunches. Others are allowing students to leave campus for lunch. Others have multiple locations that they use, that they can use for lunch service. I understand that one of the proposals is to have the students eat outside. I hope it doesn't rain. Not all students are built equally. We are already using every available space with our half-student attendance. Some people believe that there is a standard-sized classroom, that all classrooms in every district are the same size. So if one district is able to meet in person, then we should all be able to meet in person. This simply is not the case. In the junior high, we have some classrooms that measure over 1,000 square feet of usable space. I assume we aren't sitting children on countertops and sinks, so I subtracted that from my measurements. We have other classrooms that are less than 650 square feet of usable space. Size alone does not, is not enough. We must also look at how many students we have in those classrooms. Over the last several years, we have reduced our teaching staff. We have trimmed our budget, we have reduced the number of teachers. During referendum talks, you may remember, that we pointed out we had cut our staff to bare bones. We have also been under a soft hiring freeze, I believe, to where we do not replace retiring teachers. Doing so has saved the district money and has kept us financially afloat, and we do appreciate that. However, it also means that our class sizes are higher than other districts. Our class sizes have increased, reducing staff, redistribute students into other sections of the same class. For example, most departments at the junior high went from six teachers down to five, which also means we went from 10 sections of eighth-grade science to eight, and now we have classes of 25 to 30. In that 650-square-foot room, remember? That class has 26. Instead of having class sizes of 20 to 23, when putting available space and class size together, you should notice that we will be violating the six-foot spacing rule in several classrooms. Each student requires approximately 25 square feet of space. That's a three-foot radius times pi. It equals 28.26. I rounded down so we could overlap the circles. Didn't provide the full six foot. The extra five students would require an additional 140 square feet of space. I don't think we have it. Smaller student ratio to, or smaller student-to-teacher ratios may be how those other districts have been able to go back and remain in person. We aren't them. I understand that the Health Department has signed off on the language of six foot to the greatest extent possible and six foot to the best of our ability, and they understand that six foot can't always be met, but I don't think they understand or realize that we would have desks touching each other. If we say six foot to the greatest extent possible and we set them next to each other, I don't think that's the best we can do. I did also find the same wording in the CDC Operational Strategy. Operational Strategy for K-12 Schools Through Phase Mitigation, updated in February of this year. I also saw the one that was released recently. I have the, I didn't print that one. I have the IDPH School Guidance. I have the Illinois State Board of Education, and the U.S. Department of Education COVID-19 Handbook Volume One, Strategies for Safely Reopening Elementary and Secondary Schools. All of them say the same wording of that six-foot physical spacing, and all of them say that that can be achieved with cohorting and potting. I dropped my pencil.
Behind you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up here pretty quick, please.
All right. As a side note, I know that it's been mentioned that the staff will be vaccinated, the staff will not all be vaccinated, and even with vaccination, the same guidelines, even the ones released this week, say that we don't have to, fully vaccinated people don't have to wear masks around other fully masked vaccinated people. Our students will not be vaccinated. And it says, when they're around other people, that they still need to have six-foot spacing and masks. Even the new guidelines say that. The only thing the new guidelines say is that, that would relate to us without being everybody in the room being vaccinated, is that the fully vaccinated people would not have to quarantine after exposure. That's the only difference it makes. I want to make one last point, if I may. In a recent meeting, I was, I asked why we were bringing the cohorts together when we don't have the space, and I was told very clearly, because the parents are demanding it. Respected members of the Board, I ask you if that precedent, if that precedent is what you are wanting to set here today, that you and the district are willing to disregard guidelines, standards, physical space, and our students' safety because parents are demanding, that is a slippery slope. I know parents who would demand that we not enforce the mask mandate, I know some that would demand in-person proms and graduation, and others that may demand not to administer the standardized tests, although I might be okay with that. I do have a proposed solution. I propose that we continue the hybrid plan, but we invite our failing students back four days a week. That number of students would not push us over the threshold. They could come in, we do that for our special needs students at the junior high and at the elementary, bringing those back four days a week. I also ask that the second part of my proposal would be to require attendance during the Google meets. Currently, we do not. Parents don't know if the students are attending or not. And if we do, and we have them, the students could attend virtually on the days that they're, on the remote days, and then they could be in person. So they're still getting teacher-led instruction all the days. Thank you, and I'm sorry I took so long. I'm just very passionate about this, and I think that the facts speak for it, so thank you very much.
Anyone else? Is anyone else that has signed in on the meet, the Google meet, or Hangout, or whatever, that wants to comment? Anyone else in the audience?
I would like to.
Pardon? Yeah, go ahead. Who are you?
My, my name's Bobby Harker. I'm a special ed teacher at the junior high. I was diagnosed with COVID February 1st. My entire family of five tested positive. My daughter and my son have both had cardiac issues, and I really want to thank the district because we would not have caused these cardiac issues if it hadn't been for the return-to-play protocol that they put in place. We've also had issues with brain fog in a severe way, like everybody talks about brain fog and compares it to like pregnancy brain or something like that. I, I can't read anymore. I've had to send pictures of things to my mother and have her tell me what it says. I can only count to 80, and I've not been able to return to work. I think you have a great weight on your shoulders here, and this is not going to be an easy decision for you, and I, and I'm sorry that you have to make this choice, but I just wanted to let you know that it's, that it's still here, and people are still getting sick from it. My grandmother was hospitalized today for COVID, so I just, I just felt like I needed to say something that, I mean, I'm from this community, I can't drive a car, I've lived here my entire life, and I get lost trying to drive because I can't, I have no idea where I am. I get completely confused. It's like my brain completely reboots itself, and it scares me, and I just, the thought of someone else going through this is terrifying to me. But I guess, I guess that's all I wanted to say. I'm sorry, I get lost in where I'm going to. I, I'm kind of lost focus on what I'm saying now even. So just, just keep in mind that this is real. People are going through this. I've always thought of myself as an intelligent person, and the best thing that I prided myself on was to recognize when someone is struggling and try to help them find a way to work through it, and I, and I'm struggling to find a way to work through this for myself to just be a functioning adult. So just kind of keep in mind as you make your choices that this is still real, and we need to recognize that we need to help kids and we need to be there for kids, but we need to also try to keep them safe. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who signed in, or anyone present who wishes to address the Board?
Yes, I would like to address the Board.
And who are you?
This is Maureen Arcis, and I'm speaking as both a teacher and a parent in the district. And then I would really like to thank Bobby Harker for talking about her personal experiences and the others who've called in today to express their feelings. Something that I wanted to point out is that, from what I've learned from members of the district leadership team, we had already had a basic plan in mind to come back after spring break. Many teachers were comfortable with this. Students who had been doing well on remote learning might, may have had the opportunity to continue with that, but that was already in our minds, and we kind of got blindsided today. Just after school today, many of us heard that tonight it was going to be proposed for us to go back to school, 100% of the students, starting March 22nd, five days per week, and none of us had any idea about this until this afternoon. That leaves us nine school days to prepare for this big change, and I don't think that's enough time for any of us. And as a parent, my child has been doing very well on remote learning, and she had heard about the possibility of having to come back after spring break, and that gave her some anxiety, and so through talks with a resource teacher, we had decided that we're going to go ahead and bring her back with the hybrid learning on March 15th. That way, giving her some time to get acclimated, only coming a couple of days per week, having fewer students in each class. And then I came home today and told her about the possibility of only having that for one week before being surrounded by many students all at once, and knowing that all of her classes wouldn't be able to social distance six feet, and that raised her anxiety all over again. I just think that this is way too fast for both teachers and students to get used to the idea of coming back, and I don't think it's enough time to prepare for that. I'm thinking that the possibility of coming back after spring break is a more realistic plan. But thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? This is Sandy Hooper, and I'm like Maureen, just totally shocked because it's my understanding, we already had a plan to come back, all four days with everybody, starting after spring break. Monday was still spring break, then Tuesday was a planning day, and Wednesday was a remote day, and then Thursday, April, I believe it's the 7th, we, both cohorts were coming. So that was the plan that I thought was already out there. I thought this had been communicated to parents. So when I hear today that, that you're planning to come in on everyone coming on the 22nd, why the change? Why the change? That's only five student days difference, and we have time to get all of our plans and our ducks in a row, but, you know, so I just don't understand why the change all of a sudden? And I do, I want to see our students, but we had made plans, and now it's like you're throwing them out and doing something different. I just don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Jim Andrick. I don't claim to have an answer to this problem that we have, and I just want to let everybody know that it's a very hot-button issue, and people feel strongly on both sides. know that it's a very hot-button issue, and people feel strongly on both sides. The only thing that I fear is that at some point we were to lose somebody, and it would be very hard to live with ourselves if we did that. My view is, is I think we need them back in school to a point, but I also believe that they need to stay out, too. So I mean, this is just an issue that no matter what you choose as a board, you're not going to be pleasing half the people. And I, I don't wish to be in your shoes, but on the same token, kids need to be amongst each other a little bit, and maybe a little more than they are. I don't know, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Anyone signed into the Google Hangout, wish to comment? Anyone else in the cafeteria? All right, if not, we will move on to the communications. Dr. Doherty?
So we have hats off to our sports teams who have, who have taken to the courts. Haley Segal, senior, scored her 1,000th basketball point on Saturday in a game against Jerseyville. Congratulations, Haley. This is the last week of our winter sports, and fall sports start with practices already underway: boys soccer, football, and girls volleyball. I'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize three individuals who have recently passed that are important to the Taylorville community. Slick Parrish, who is a longtime Taylorville historian, a lifetime Tornado member. He was on the 1944 state basketball team. Chuck Hanson, who was a defensive coordinator for the Tornados, and Dave Pickett from Fun Photo, who took countless pictures of our schools. So just a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on into the consent agenda. There's a couple of things on the consent agenda. We will pull out of that agenda the tenure list because we have board members who will have to not vote on that, will have to abstain from that vote. So when we get to personnel, we can do the personnel sheet, but we cannot vote yet on the tenure list. Sorry about that. Can't vote on the tenure list yet. We'll do that separately so that individuals can abstain from that vote rather than abstaining from all of the consent agenda. So moving on into that process, we have three sets of minutes to look at. We have the regular February 8th board meeting. We have the building committee meeting that was on the 23rd, and we have the special board meeting that was on the 25th. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the February 8th meeting? Does anyone have any additions to the building committee meeting on the 23rd? Dr. Meiser?
At our last, is this thing on?
Yeah, but you gotta speak right into it.
At our last school board building committee meeting, our band director, Chris Gunn, addressed the board for the need of a fine arts center. I know previous boards have studied it, but to date, nothing has been built. We have one of the finest bands in the state. 2019, we were featured at the Peoria meeting. This year, eight students made the all-state, all-state band. Their pictures were featured in this effort. I understand we have done a lot for sports, but it is time to consider a fine arts center. I have visited several schools since our last meeting, looking at their auditoriums. Meridian has a very nice one built in 2015. I know a number of musicians who graduated from Taylorville High School that are playing professionally. We have two recent graduates who are band directors in our area. Ron and Jean Nimmer's son was in a movie that earned J.K. Simmons an Academy Award for Best Actor in Whiplash.
All right, George. Wait a minute, guys. We're talking about the meeting notes right now. When we get to the building committee report and new business, we will address any other motions in that. We don't do that here. So I'm going to try to get you back on focus here. Sorry about that, and this is important information here. But right now, it's, do we have a correction to the meeting notes? How about the 25th, the special board meeting on the 25th? Do we have any corrections to that or comments? All right. If we could move on to the claims, does anyone have any questions on the claims? Wendy, if you could go ahead and talk about claims and the treasurer's report, please.
As far as claims, everything is at typical, typical expense as it would be in March, February. The treasurer's report expenses, expenses should be 67% for this time of year. They are currently under budget at 65% in the education fund. The district is receiving EBF money and grant payments on a regular basis. The district just received our funding letter from the Distance Learning Grant. We have approved the order to be fulfilled for our district as well as 13 other districts. The district will be finalizing and receiving the bond payment on March 11th.
Anything else?
Yep, sums up my February.
An ogre voice going on. All right, does anyone have any questions on any of the treasurer's report? All right, if not, then would you like to address the personnel issues, please? Dr. Doherty?
Yes. We have resignation of John Roberts, social studies teacher, Taylorville High School, effective the end of the school year. Change of assignment, Angela Chapman, three-hour cafeteria worker, Taylorville Junior High School to a four-hour cafeteria worker, Taylorville Junior High School. Request for leave of absence, Stiles Smith, teacher, Taylorville High School, FMLA leave, effective approximately March 15th, 2021. Recommendation to employ, Jerry Lowery, volunteer assistant track coach, Taylorville High School. Chad Sutton, volunteer assistant, girls, track coach, Taylorville High School. Lacey Brown, lead secretary, Taylorville High School, effective March 23rd, 21. Susan Good, 5.75 reading aide, North Elementary School, effective March 9th. Doug Bauscher, interim, girls, 7th grade basketball coach, five years' experience. The two items that we will move off of the personnel sheet for separate consideration are approval of the tenure list and approval of the seniority list. These are annual things that are conducted in line with ISV business and also vetted through our union.
All right, you've heard the personnel list. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the personnel list? As we said, we will move the seniority and tenure to a separate issue, so if anyone would like to, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I can make the motion.
Marburger, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Driscoll. Would you please do a roll call vote for us?
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Ms. Van Huss?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes. The consent agenda is approved. We will now deal with the seniority list and also with the tenure list. Dr. Doherty?
So old business, our return-to-learn update, the consideration of a combined cohort model.
No, 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 no. We have to do these lists here first. We have to do a vote on these lists first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have any comments on that?
I, I do not, other than it's annually, school districts put together the seniority list and the tenure list, and it's just something that we maintain and update on an annual basis and then present it for approval.
All right, we'll do, I need a motion to approve these lists?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Dr. Driscoll, Dr. Meiser seconds. We'll need a roll call vote.
Mr. Bryan?
Abstain.
Dr. Fries?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Ms. Van Huss?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Abstain.
Mr. Turner?
Abstain. The motion passes four to three. Well, four, oh, and three. All right, now, we will move on to old business and discuss the proposed schedule changes.
So as you have heard from some of our teachers and parents who spoke this evening, the topic is how to extend the school week so that kids get additional time on campus. Several things occurred today, and just for the backdrop, the district has a leadership team who meets and makes decisions. And our leadership team is comprised of administrators and key individuals from each school, and then different grade level representations. The last time that we met, we meet on the last Wednesday of each month. The last time that we met, we had a schedule that we were bringing forth to you tonight, and it combined our cohorts after spring break and retained Wednesdays as a remote day with a 2:00 dismissal. And the concept for the 2:00 dismissal is so that they can still manage remote instruction because there is a portion of that that will remain. Over this weekend and of late, CDC has had some changes. There are 36 states that have now completely opened up, and mitigation efforts are removed. Illinois, of course, is not one of those states. We are held by IDPH guidelines to follow their rules. At 3:30 today, I received a message from IHSA on sports, and they've opened up to 25% capacity for outdoor sports. And we know that's in conjunction with football season that's coming because that's been moved to the fall, and we predicted that to happen. We predict additional lightening of guidelines to unfold as these next days come forward. And the, the Department of Education at the national level appointed the new superintendent, and so we're starting to see some change. And so it has been the recommendation of the administrative team who presented to our union today, a proposal to move up our return-to-learn plan for all in-person. So the expectation would kids come back to school in person on the 22nd of March for a five-day week. We would like to propose that we keep a 2:00 dismissal so that we still could manage remotes. We have some that we would like to limit it to medically necessary and administrative approval because students need to be in school. We have worked with the Health Department. We have worked with the State Board of Education. We have worked with the local region. We have put every mitigation effort into place to maintain health and safety. And at this point, we have ordered a tent for outdoor lunch. We have ordered outdoor serving stations. We have picnic tables. We have subs per grade level. We've done everything within our human power. We have cleaning efforts. We have cleaning products. We have open air. We have fresher, warmer weather here. We're working on the HVAC systems. We, we believe it is in the best interest that our students spend more time on campus, and I am, I believe this so strongly that I'm going to support my administrators and my teachers to focus on in-person learning first. And if we have to program for remote outside of that, it'll be a very limited approach, either with a packet or with a live stream, if our teachers will do that, or a Google that's put out from the 2:00 until 3:30 on this daily basis. But we are absolutely limiting the option for remote instruction because of all of the factors that are coming our way and continue to come our way. And I know that this is going to ruffle feathers. We did not have an opportunity to re-meet with our district leadership team, and we do take their input into consideration when we make decisions in the district. And they left last, the last Wednesday of February, thinking that we would come back, and I left Friday thinking that we would come back because you know I sent that to you in your plan for consideration. But as things unfolded this weekend and as things unfolded as we worked through today, I cannot in good conscience run the school district and carry on with that recommendation. My recommendation is Monday through Friday, beginning March 22nd. What happens is that gives us one week on campus before we break for spring break, of which we can get kids in. It'll be like the first week of school. They will combine with their peers. We will focus on social-emotional learning, and we do have social-emotional counselors. We have social-emotional curriculum projects, and we have services at every school in place by grade level. And, and I'd like to know basically your understanding of our ability to, to make this, make this recommendation and, and put this plan out to our community. This Friday, we do have the second shot clinic to vaccinate staff. We have 210 individuals that are reserved. Right now, they have a good percentage of protection. The statistics vary depending on what report you read, but it's anywhere between 70 and high 80s, and you pick up a few extra degrees of protection 10 to 14 days following the second shot. So I really believe that we have done everything in our power to structure this. Our numbers are down. Right now, I don't have any positives. We are working with the Health Department, as I said earlier. We are working with Greg Nemo from the EMA and watching those numbers very carefully. As you know, when we came back on campus in November, the numbers were up almost to 22%. That was a problem, and that posed a health risk for the community, and we had to pull the plug and go back to remote. This is different. This is different. The numbers do not warrant keeping students on remote.
All right, I'm going to ask the individual board members to take a moment, and then I want you to, Dr. Fries, I think we'll start with you. Questions, comments? Where are you at on this issue? Dr. Fries?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear you, understand you on the mic.
What I'm asking is for your comments on this proposal. Where do you think we should be?
Oh, okay. Well, I certainly, which was just laid in front of us just before we came in for the meeting, but I certainly support it, and I think we've, we've been wanting to get the kids back full-time, and we know that's the best place to be. Again, I made comments last time about safety has been an issue, of, of safety of personnel and students as well, and so on and so forth, and state regs and federal regs and Department of, of CDC, G, what is it?
CDC.
Yeah, yeah. And so certainly, I, I'm, I'm very much in, in favor of getting this, and again, it's not going to make any difference what we do. We're going to get criticism one way or the other, and we're going to get happy, happiness one way or the other. But this, we've, we've gone along. We've tried several different approaches that were important at the time. Now we're at this, and I think that now we're going to come back and bring them back full-time on the 22nd, and I think that's fantastic. I'm all for it.
All right, Dr. Meiser?
I, I agree. I, I know that it's difficult when the kids can't be in school, but I appreciate in the health area, having been the health profession myself, of knowing the situation about a disease and what it can do to people. And as much as you want to do something, you still have to be safe, and the rules of being safe, as you know, have been changing by the day. And at least it appears that they're going back in our favor now so that we can start bringing the kids back on a more regular basis, but we still should be somewhat conservative. We need to follow the rules, the staying six feet apart, doing the right things, and being safe with people because this, this disease is not over with yet. And until it does, I think we have to be very cautious and do the best we can under the circumstances, and I appreciate the superintendent and her group for working hard, trying to bring this about as fast as possible, but still as safe as possible.
Ms. Marburger?
Sure. So I, first of all, I want to say thanks to the district leadership team.
So first of all, I want to say thanks to the district leadership team, Dr. Doherty, all of you for keeping our kids safe, our teachers safe, but I think it's time. I agree with this plan one-hundred percent. We need to get them back in school five days a week. It's a perfect plan to do it before spring break, get everybody used to it before, just like you said, before school starts. I think we've followed everything. We've followed the safety guidelines. We've taken measures in order to make sure that lunch is safe. I mean, there's just a lot of things that have been going on behind the scenes that a lot do not see, and so I think we're ready. I, we got to do it. That's my opinion.
Mr. Driscoll?
I'm a hundred percent for getting the kids back in school. I have been for quite a while. I think Dr. Doherty remembers probably almost a year ago, I think it was in April, I said the worst thing about COVID is I worry we're going to lose a generation of children. So the only way to prevent that, I think, is in school as soon as possible. COVID is never going away. It's going to be something like the Spanish flu. When it evolves, you'll get your flu shot, or you'll get the flu. It'll eventually just be under the rug, but not as deadly as it is to some of the people that are affected right now. And yes, it does affect people, makes them very sick, but that's not all the people. But we don't risk a generation of children. We put them in school, we teach them. So I back your plan.
Erin Hux?
I'm like Dave and everybody else. I'm a hundred-and-fifty percent, two-hundred percent ready for my kids to be back in school, for the kids to be back in school. Nobody's ever lived through a pandemic. Nobody knows the future, but there are a lot of things missing for the kids. I know that we had great plans for this upcoming year had COVID not happened. With our social-emotional counselors being hired and to help in different ways versus how they are now, they still have been able to help our children, but not in the way that we had planned. There are so many great plans that have gotten disrupted. I think no matter which way we do it, you're going to have anxiety, you're going to have depression, whether you go back, whether you not. I've watched it in my kids over the past few months, but I know that I have seen absolute change in them even just in the two days a week that we've been back in school. So I know they are ready. I think the community is ready, and you know hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but we need to do everything that we can to have our kids prepared for the future. So I agree with them going back in a couple of weeks. I do have a question, though, regarding the lunches. If it really is two-hundred-and-ten minutes, that is a long time for, I mean, I understand the, you know, the separation and, you know, the limits of things, but having breakfast at ten-fifteen and, you know, not getting home, I don't think my kids even get home until almost three o'clock. So I'm just kind of wondering how that would work, if we could, you know, maybe serve lunches in the rooms or, you know, make it, you know, if there was just something else that we could do with that.
Our principals are working on every contingent space and plan, and they'll do the absolute best.
And I know we've been planning this since before school started. I was very disappointed when we didn't go back to school, but I know from day one, it's always been our plan to go back, so we've always had this. So to say for it to happen overnight, that may have literally been the case, but we've been planning for these kids to come back since school before school ever started. So I think we're good.
Mr. Brennan?
I think it's fair to say this year is awful, and hopefully it's better. For me, I always go back to the question of what's best for the students, best for the staff, best for the district. I don't have a clear answer. It's not real clear to me one way or the other. I'm with everybody else. We need to get back in school, and we need to do it safely. As you said, hindsight's twenty-twenty. I don't want to be in a position to where we go back and then we're going to have to pull back out again. I don't know how we can stop that, though. That's just going to be something that we'll have to deal with if it happens. I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep our staff safe because we know we have some at-risk individuals. And I know we are doing everything we can, but that is something we still have to consider in our decision. And we talked about tents for lunch. I'm concerned about weather, not just the rain. I mean, we have a gully washer, a thunderstorm. I could see that being an issue, and I know we'll get through it.
We won't be out in the tent during a thunderstorm. We'd have to utilize indoor space and just spread up, and we'll probably disrupt PE classes and have to take over gym space when that type of thing would occur in hallways.
I guess another question I have, because I just found about this an hour ago. I know, I understand why it just got to us now, but since that just happened, is this going to be something we can physically be ready for? Do we, I mean, can we get the desks back? Can we get everything in there? And I hear a lot of, we're going to do everything we can, and I know everybody will. I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, can we actually get that done? Because it seems to me like we've got a big tall order ahead of us that may not be obvious to everyone, but just, you know, get everybody back in the classrooms and have a system in store.
We can do it. We met with the science wing. That's the department. Our junior high is our biggest challenge because there's a ton of kids in that school. There's almost eight-hundred kids in that school, and the common space is limited, so it's a real problem. We met with the science department, and they have giant tables in their classrooms. So we have a plan in place where maintenance Wednesdays removing them, and desks had been ordered, and desks will be in, and they're able to utilize the space.
The other thing I wanted to ask was, since we'll be going back to school Wednesdays, are we not going to do deep cleanings or in-between, or how will the cleaning go? Because obviously, we've got kids in the classroom. That's not times we can be doing any kind of cleaning there.
So what that will look like is before school, after school, and during the school day, the cleaning team. We met with the department this morning and worked that plan up. If there are quarantines that occur, if there are exposures, then we go into the deep cleaning mode, but it's just, it's just your typical cleaning and sanitation measures that are currently underway.
As I understand, if we have something happen in a given area, we only have to contain that area, not the whole wing or part of the school, right? Okay.
Well, and you got to watch where the germ's going, where it originates from and where it spreads to. That's the path that you have to take care of. The social distancing piece, get as close to six foot as humanly possible. What happens is the quarantine goes off of a six-foot radius. So if you're within that area and you're closer than six feet, then you quarantine out if there's an exposure. On a bus, it's three feet, or excuse me, three seats in any direction would be the quarantine if there's an exposure.
And the last thing I'll say is, busing, is that going to be something that we'll be able to handle?
We can handle it, yes. We've already been in touch with her, and she's got a plan in place.
Thank you very much.
I have one more comment, too, that I meant to make earlier, is I think the committee has done an exceptional job, the leadership team, and give them, everybody a week there to adjust before spring break is a good move because it gives them a chance to get ready for the full return of the students. I think that was, that's a real positive move.
Okay, I'm going to put my two cents worth in. First off, I'm going to address something that was mentioned in the open hearing comment session. There was not a hint, but a direct indication that our actions at this board caused the death of a student in our district. I want to be really clear about something here. To exploit the death of a child for your own personal goals, I find totally disgusting. Furthermore, that child was not in our school system for the first semester, had only come back here on the sixth of January. So I think it's, again, another misrepresentation of the data. And I will tell you, you can hear the disgust in my voice, but this is great control in here. That was uncalled for. That was beneath the dignity that should be shown to that child. That's all I have to say about that. Now I want to address some other issues. We constantly hear we don't have a plan. We have had a plan on our website since June of 2020. It has been revised at least four or five times. It is easily acceptable, accessible there, and it has been out there. So again, we have had a plan. It has not been a plan everyone has been happy with, but that doesn't mean it's not a plan. And the last thing is the schedule. I have some serious concerns. I have voiced these before, and I know everybody's going to get bored with me talking about how you design things and then trying to do things the way they aren't designed to be done. This wonderful room that we are sitting in right here is designed to manufacturing process to get students in and out in an orderly fashion in more than two-hundred per session so that we don't have to start feeding kids at two, ten o'clock in the morning and be done by two in the afternoon. But with the restrictions that we have, even if we petition, we can still only put a hundred kids in here, and we have over two-hundred to get through here if we want to stop feeding kids at ten o'clock in the morning, right after they had their granola bar for breakfast and not get them fed again. The last one's at two o'clock, so we've got hungry kids sitting here all afternoon and don't get anything to eat when they get home. We're using gyms, and I know all the building administrators are doing the best they can, but you cannot ignore, it doesn't happen, folks. We don't live in a black hole where we can make room that doesn't exist. So I am concerned about, I think everyone has done an excellent job. I have been out here and toured this area during lunch while we've been feeding the kids. We've had half the kids in here, worked pretty good, doing well. And I have faith that you'll figure it out, but I want people to understand the matrix that we're working with here is not what the school was designed to deal with, with the restraints that have been put on us. You need to understand that. It sounds easy to say, well, everybody else does it. One of the districts that's been thrown in our face only has five-hundred kids in their junior high. We have three-hundred more to deal with in fifty, fifty student segments. And we have cut to the bone. We've reduced teaching staffs. Yeah, it's easy to say, well, you've got a gym, just put more kids in the gym and do this and break this all, but who's going to teach them? Everyone wants to ignore these datas because, you know, that's the boring stuff. That's the stuff that isn't exciting. It's more exciting to place blame and call names. That's exciting. But the data and the devil is in the details. And that's what we need to be concentrating on. So I am concerned about the lunch. You think you can handle it? Okay, but I'm telling you right now, I think that's going to be a hell of a challenge. Social distancing, everyone needs to know right off the bat, we're never going to be able to achieve social distancing. I will go back to the Missouri school. The Missouri schools that were open admitted right off the bat and got the clearance from their health departments in their state that they could avoid the social distancing, but everybody has to mask up, and they have a set procedure of notifying people on exposures and that, and it's the only way. If they were faced, as I talked to the superintendent down there, if they had to operate under our rules, they would have been closed and totally remote. If we get laxed up on, if... Everybody's doing their best. I understand that. I want people to understand something here. We will not be able to social distance. It's impossible with that many kids in there. I've measured classrooms and figured out the areas. It don't work. It's ten pounds in a five-pound bag. So... That's all I got to say. It's up to you guys. What do you want to do?
Chris, that was just a presentation.
Yeah, I don't think we had to vote on that, right?
It was, but I believe that we need to, at this point, either agree to this plan as a group.
I'll move to go accept.
A second.
I second. I think we all second.
We got it. Dave and...
I think Dr. Freeze beat me.
Dr. Freeze?
Let me fight over it, guys. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 No. It passes, six-one. Okay, I'm going to ask Wendy, if you, I know you've already covered this, but if you would take care of items two and three on the old business on the bonds, please, everybody so that they're all up on board here. You all have the bond information in your packets.
Okay, so the first one is for the bond update. We are closing on our bonds on March eleventh. We have two bonds. One is for fifteen million, six-eighty-five, general obligation limited school bond at Series twenty-twenty-one A for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay for the principal and interest on the bond. Bond two is a twenty-twenty-one B alternative revenue source series for eight million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. It's for refunding outstanding bonds of the district, the pledge of certain revenues to the payment of principal and interest on the bonds, the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay such principal and interest in the pledged revenues are insufficient to make such payments. I would just like to reiterate on these bonds. We have two bonds. We have the working cash bond, and we have the general obligation alternative revenue bond. The alternative revenue bond, all that is, is a refinancing of a bond that we already have. We didn't get any money out of that. It's just to refinance a bond that we already had. We saved the district a million, eighty thousand dollars just in refinancing with the low interest rate that we received. The other bond, the fifteen million, six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand working cash bond, every ten to twenty years, a school district re-ups the bonds that they already have. They keep the same amount on the tax levies. They just go back in ten to twenty years and update their bonds. We were able to update this bond in 2019, but we didn't. We saved it. We waited to see if we could find a lower interest rate, so we just did it just a couple months ago. So I went back and we calculated what we would have spent in 2019 and what we would have spent now on the interest rate and the difference. If we would have received this bond in 2019, like we were able to, we saved one and a half million dollars waiting until just here recently with the low interest rates. So I know there's been a lot of questions about the bonds, and I just wanted everyone to know how much we saved the district getting these bonds at the times that we did.
Thank you. All right. Technology update. Dr. Doherty?
So our district is working on transitioning our department. We held a send-off party for Chris Kuntzman, who resigned Friday, presented him with a plaque and gave a nice speech about the contributions of technology and changes across the time he served in the district. We're currently working with CTI and with our staff on getting a distribution of those job functions, so it's a team approach, and the transition's going smoothly at this point.
Does anyone have any questions on the technology update? All right, we will move on to new business. Designation of the People's Bank and Trust as the district's financial institution. Dr. Doherty?
So each year, we make a determination as to which bank that we're going to do our district business with. People's Bank and Trust has been the designated financial institution, and the recommendation is to continue with that.
Yes, I entertain a motion, Dr. Meiser.
I'll second. Second.
Second. Mr. Bryant? I think we can just do this on a voice vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
I have to abstain.
All right, we have two abstentions over here. Note that, please, in the record that we have two people who have abstained from this, so we, let's go through a roll call. so we, let's go through a roll call, and we'll do it officially that way. Be easier.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
It passes, 5-0, and two abstentions. Dr. Doherty, would you fill us in on the consideration and adoption of the TSR supplemental savings plan?
I'll take that, I have some notes on it, if she doesn't, do you care?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we are very excited that TRS has a new supplemental plan, it's a new 457B that is attached to TRS, that our teachers are eligible to participate in. It's a great program, the 457 is kind of set up like a 401K or a 403B. You're able to put up to $19,500 a year into the deferred compensation program. The great thing about this 457 is that if you have teachers that are already put into a 403B or a 401K, they can put $19,500 annually into that program. They can also do it with TRS. So you have the opportunity to defer income of up to $40,000 for a family, which is, it's just a great program. So we had to sign this into effect by March 31st, according to TRS. They just gave us an extension to that, they haven't told us when the exact extension is, but that is extended. And I never received a timeline of when we can start this, but I'm going to guess that it is going to be at the beginning of the next school year. But they never did send me an exact date of when we get to start it. But we do get to start offering this to our employees as soon as it becomes available by TRS.
Does anyone have any questions?
The only question I have is just teachers, right?
Just teachers.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just part of the TRS. Well, teachers and administrators.
Well, but that's a very good question, because IMRF has a similar program that's been in existence for a number of years. So they can contribute to the IMRF version, and that would be for the staff that's not certified.
Okay, thank you.
And they, last year, they did 7% return on investment, so it's pretty healthy.
I think that's a great deal, so...
It is, it's a fantastic offer.
What we will do is we will work with our staff and train them on the option, so they understand some of the financial initiatives.
We have other deferred.
Yeah, right now, we have American Fidelity, and they offer the 403Bs, Annuity Flex Plans...
That will continue, this is just an additional.
This is additional, and it's offered through TRS. And like I say, you can add this in addition to the 403B, so you can do 19,500 annually in the 403B, and 19.5 in this 457 plan, so...
Aren't there options where you can put your money in pre and post-tax?
On the 457, it's only pre-tax.
Pre, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but on the annuity, through American Fidelity, we do have that opportunity through the school district, you can do pre-tax or post-tax, whichever you prefer. But this 457B through TRS is pre-tax only. They did say that they were thinking about coming out with one, they don't have it yet, but I think they eventually will offer a post-tax with this 457.
All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments? I would entertain a resolution.
I make a motion.
Chris, my brother, a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Van Hux. We can do this, I believe, on a voice vote.
I think I'd roll call it.
You would.
You have to roll call it.
Okay, all right. I keep trying to move along, but that's all right. Let me roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Who had the motion?
I did.
And who had the second?
I did.
Ms. Van Hux?
Thank you.
Okay, the REO, this is a yearly thing that we do, would you like to explain that to them? Dr. Chris?
Yes, the Regional Office of Education offers an alternative safe school, and each year, we are invited to adopt an intergovernmental agreement, so that we can access those services
I'll move to approve.
Dave? And a second. George? And this, just a voice call?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? District Improvement Plan. This is where I believe we'll do our committee reports. I'm going to address the, we had a building committee meeting, we discussed the upcoming bonds, and we looked at all of the projects that we have over the next few years. 85% of the bond, new bond money, has to be committed to projects within the first three years. We sat down and looked at the projects, and decided to break them into three phases, basically. The first phase is going to address our heating and air conditioning, and controls issues at Memorial School, on the third floor, in the library at the high school, and on the eighth-grade wing at the junior high. Looking at Dyken Systems in the junior high and the high school, which will bring in more fresh air, and allow us to get a better air exchange, plus it will solve some problems with our equipment that is causing us some control problems, and giving us issues in the classroom. In addition to that, at Memorial School, we have some work to do over there, and we have an outdated control system that is similar to the problems that we ran into with the Ken Controls, that they're hard to update, service is starting to drop off on those, and we need to get that done, and get the units on the roof taken care of. That was the Phase 3 portion of it, it's a little over $5 million. The other items that we looked at were considered a Phase 2 and a Phase 3, which will be considered and looked at, was to do with roofing work that needs to be done, windows that need to be replaced, and tuck pointing and other items that need to be done. In addition to that, we also discussed the fact that we had the fire out here in the shed. We're still negotiating with the insurance company on what that's going to come out as far as a resolution of dollars. I'm guessing it's going to be between $175,000 and $180,000. There are some things that we can do with that. There's some material out there that was destroyed in that fire that will need to be replaced, and the administration is working with different departments on what they have to do there. And those things will be addressed in due time. I guess the big thing, that's the first thing, and I would entertain a motion to approve the Phase 3 projects at this time, and bring that to the board, if any...
I think that was my idea, so I'll go ahead and make it.
Mr. Driscoll, do I have a second? Mr. Meiser? All right. And like I said, these are the heating and air conditioning issues, and we talked about this, about the air exchange and safety of the community, and just providing a better environment for the students, so if you gentlemen have any comments you'd like to make on that?
I would just like to say that the motion's only for the first phase, which is the HVAC, because we were going to separate them out to make sure the roofs that we were going to do last, I mean, the second phase. So we still need more study on that, but I think it was good phasing them together, so we can get all the HVACs done at once, instead of helter-skelter an HVAC here this year, and then next year here, where we can bring people in at once.
And we talked about bundling processes, there may be some Monday saves there in bundling, and how we do that. We also talked about doing it this summer, so is that part of your motion?
Yeah, that was...
Is to go ahead to Phase 3 and to do it this summer?
Yes.
All right, and that, you're okay with that on the second?
Yes.
In that case, I would, we have a motion on the table, is there any other discussion by any of the other members, you were all here?
The only question I had is, we were talking about the third floor for the library?
Yes.
Did we look at any other options for that? We talked about if there was a better way to do that, or potentially, wouldn't cost as much?
Well...
Because I was taking that new, that system out, and then putting a new one in, and...
What we looked at is, if there was, we have large air handling units up there, that we either have to figure out how we're going to use those, we're going to retire those in place, or we're going to get them out. If we can retire those in place, and figure out how to tie into the existing ductware with our new system, then that could save us some money, we would retire those pieces in place, and not have to move them. If we had to move them out there, we're going to have to either disassemble and use some cranes to get that out, and move the other stuff up, so that's the one thing that they want to look at. And I'm assuming that we could probably do that in a couple of ways. And we can bid that out as, tell us what it's going to cost if we do this and retire those in place, tell us what it's going to cost if we have to get those out of there. And then that way, you'll have two choices to look at, how you want to do that, and how you want to work that process. That's how I would run the project.
I just remember Dave asking that question.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that needs to tap into the same apparatus, so somehow, they have to get the new system kind of to plug in where the old system currently is, if that makes sense. But how much of it has to be removed in order to accomplish that, is what we're going to have to determine.
That's why that range on that, on that one item was such a huge range.
That was, yeah, that's the reason there is the range there.
We're hoping for the low end of that range.
That's what I would hope.
Because we want to retain as many of those funds as possible for the next area of topic.
So if, I would call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Freeze?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Ms. Van Hux?
Yes.
Dr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
The second item that was discussed, and this goes back to the board meeting on the 8th, when Mr. Gunn came and talked to us about performing arts. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Meiser. He read through his notes, if he has anything else to add to that process, and then Mr. Freeze has some comments.
Yeah, no, I addressed this early, and I didn't realize you were, I didn't realize you were going to bring it in at this point in the meeting, but basically, that, at our meeting, that Chris Gunn, our band director, addressed the board with the need, and I said that this has been talked about for a long time, but I think now is the time to act.
Dr. Freeze?
Comments that I have, you know, we've sat down and tried to think of a number of students that left this facility, this system, and gone into business, or in the music field, or whatever, and, you know, there's people that, I have one that's an MD, that is a music composer, he's an MD at the emergency room, but he's a composer at Nashville also. One has a dance studio, another one, a lot of these people came back to play the music forward. One of them was an opera singer that left here, and she's assistant professor at the University of Arizona, in Fred Fox School of Music, for goodness sakes. We have an actor, have a young man that I remember well, he would ride his bicycle out here in a snowstorm to get to music practice, okay? And he'd get here, and cold, and so on and so forth. He, when he was a freshman, he couldn't carry a note in a bushel basket, basically, he just was toned up. When he was a senior, he had a head lead role in the play. You know what he is today? He is owner and president of Blue, well, it's a production company, he's an actor, and makes movies. And, again, came through Taylorville. We've got music teachers in several different areas that we could, I mean, you could name hundreds of kids that have graduated from this system, and gone into, and doing great things in the field. So, and I've looked, by the way, I've spent looking at lots of different rooms like that that would help us, in terms of that. I've been in schools in Minnesota, in Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, where we've gone through, my wife was a music major, obviously, so when we go to those places, we go, the first thing we want to do is go to the, you know, and look at the music area. So, what we need, and here's my concern, this has been discussed for lots of years, lots of years, just gets a lot of verbal conversation, but it never gets down to an action point. So what I'm recommending tonight, and want to make a motion to do, is to appoint a committee from, and I'll designate that in a minute, but it should include, obviously, the chairman of the music department, he spoke very well last time on that, the high school principal, for example, a member of the board, the superintendent, and, you know, some members outside the community, or outside the board structure, and designate a committee to get this thing off the ground, and it may be years down the road to get it done, okay? Because it's not going to happen tomorrow, but at least let's get it started, let's look at some facilities. Some of the ones I looked at were 2,000 seats, some of them 1,000 seats. We looked at one just recently, was, what, 300, 400 seats? And we go there and talk to the people, talk to the principal, talk to the teachers, to see what, you know, what works and what functions, how they combine that with an existing building, and so on and so forth. We've got options to do those kinds of things, when we do it, and when we've got the finances to do it, is another question, but, you know, we can answer that problem as time goes on. So I would like to make a motion that we establish a committee with the head of music department, the high school principal, a board member, the superintendent, and an at-large member, at this point.
I'll second that motion.
Actually, I think that's a great idea, George. I know, over the years, I'm sure Ron, even in his first tenure, and my first tenure on the board, we've always talked about it, we've had other board members be very excited about it, but nothing ever really happened, I think, with a little, like an ad hoc committee, just to make a present, to get data, and to bring it to the board, and let us know, and then we can plan with the funds that we have available, when available, and I think it's an excellent idea.
Just so you know, I was asked to resurrect plans that were presented from prior looks at this, and I have found the blueprints and those plans, so they are in my office.
Very good.
Good. I know that there's been a number of people, when I was not on the board, before I got back on, that have addressed me as, when are we going to build an auditorium, when are we going to build an auditorium? And, so I know there's a lot of people in Taylorville that would really like to see this happen, and probably would financially support it, should we make this happen. And Chris Gunn mentioned all the things that it could be used for, and there are many. And watching over at Meridian, where I've been a couple of times now, and watching what's going on over there, and its use, was very impressive to see what they were doing over there. And surely, we can do something like that.
Well, and another comment I'd make, as I say, a lot of these people came back to this, bring the music forward, you know, type of thing, and they raised, I think, what was it, $30,000?
We raised $30,000.
For the music department. And those kids come back, they come back to class reunions, and we're invited to several of those things, as ex-teachers, okay? And they're just excited about what happened here, and how they advanced from here, and doing the things that they're doing in their own situation. So I think, you know, this committee can sit here and get some things together, and like you said, and look at them, and see what's possible. Yeah, we've got plans from somebody drew up some time ago, don't know if those are the way to go or not, that has to be decided, but at least let's start getting it going, and hopefully, it can come to fruition sometime soon, down the road, whether that's three years, or two years, or whatever it is. But at least get it on. We have an obligation, I think, to honor those kids with a room, so that, just like we're talking about.
Okay. I just have a couple of comments on this issue, and that is, and I think an exploratory committee into this is excellent. I would suggest that, just from a contract administration point, that you focus on, first off, you have the right people in there, you've got the department heads, and how this is going to be used, is going to tell you what your scope is, your scope and your schedule is going to tell you what your cost is. And that's been one of our problems in the past, is we've talked about it, but we've never defined it, and then come up with an actual cost. never defined it and then come up with an actual cost on the item. And I think this is what's most important, because if you go out and you look at the dollars that the district has, but you also look at the dollars that you would like to raise to support that or match those funds, it's going to be important for people to understand exactly what your usage process is going to be and how it's going to be handled. And it had multipurpose uses to where we can do seminars in there and training and hold board meetings, other things in a facility like that where you have perfect acoustics and audio visuals. It would enhance the Tommy TV programs, it'll enhance our journalism programs, it'll enhance everything that we have here. So I think it's a great idea. And I would just say that if there's no other discussion, I'm going to call for a voice vote. I'd like to suggest you had somebody with a technology background to your committee, because I think that'll be integral to it. And you'd want to have them from the beginning. I think you'd like to have somebody with a technology background on the committee from the beginning. Yeah, technology is, we have to look at all those aspects.
As you recall, it is on our strategic plan under the building committee. That is one of the items that's on our, so we're staying true to our strategic plan.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hutchinson is over here on the side table, and I don't want to catch him off guard. But as I said earlier, we had a late day announcement from IHSA, the High School of Sports. It was at 4:08 PM. I just looked at my memo. But he's been working then after school with the athletic director in figuring out how that's going to look in our district. Do you want to just briefly?
Sure, absolutely. Everybody here. Yeah, we got a tweet sent out by the IHSA that it kind of said that they were going to open, IHSA agreed to approve 20% fans for opera sports, which is band passing. So we've already known that this might come. They put a plan together. A big shout out to Jeb Odom for doing this as well. We're looking at, I'll give you an example, football games. What we're looking at is, we had to kind of figure out how many people would be that 20%. And so this is what we've come up with. I'm going to speak just about football right now. We will put a plan together for soccer as well, but let's just talk about football. So we're assuming the capacity would be around 350 home fans. And due to our size of our bleachers on the visitor's side, we thought 50 would meet that, and that is those in the stands and then standees, the ones that stand around the fence. Obviously, we've got social distancing issues and things that we're going to be talking about and we're going to work through. But our thought was that we would start out by just having a set number of tickets, if you will, for the home fans. We'd have a breakdown, who will get those tickets? They will get those prior to the games, and then they'll walk through the gates, they'll have to present that ticket to get into the game. We will send 50 tickets to the opposing school, and then they will give those out as they see fit, and then they'll have to come in. And those are the only people that we'll have, the athletes, game workers, support personnel, they don't count in this. And then the fans will be the total of 400 total is what we're looking at. So we've got a plan, including football players, band, dance team, cheer, some family members, purple rain for our student section, and then we'll have some extra tickets that we can distribute administratively. We've got a plan, and we're going to, hopefully it goes well. We're just excited to be able to have fans at an outdoor contest. Again, before today, they were talking about having 50 out there, and everybody didn't think that that was the right way to go. But, you know, we've kind of lived through the winter sports with only 50 inside, so I'm glad to see the change. So that's my report.
Thank you. The next thing is, we did receive an information from the governor about a new education bill that went into law today. This was a 2:01 PM announcement, and basically it talks about student, student rigorous coursework and how the adjustments will be for graduation requirements for 20, 24 kids up through age 22. It's currently age 21. So when kids hit 21, they transition to adult-based services. The legislation that's being proposed is they can finish the year, the year they turn 22. So as you know, financially, you know, we're still not fully funded from the state, and then to put that requirement on schools is a bit of a burden. The challenge is the adult organizations that the children that are disabled transition into are not plentiful enough. And so that's really the issue, but they're backing it down to, or to lower education. So watch that. There's funding consolidation bills, and you're probably going to see this get some legs through the process. I don't know what that will end up looking like, but it's been around, beaten around the state of Illinois for a very long time. There's over 800 school districts, and they would like them to be, they would like them to be fewer than that. Those were kind of two of the biggest things. The overall theme was, there's just a push to get kids back into school. And I think our district understands that and our community understands it, but you're going to see a national estate effort that aligns very similar to the work that we're doing. There's a vaccination supply problem going on, and they're starting to do some trials with 16 and 17-year-olds with the Pfizer. So that's good news. We'll see where it goes. That's kind of the legal update. I have a very exciting thing to talk about. Our high school counseling department, one of our big goals is to program for kids so they have work and school experience, and we want to put a pathways program in place for them. So basically, when they step into high school, they have a four-year plan, and it targets on their skills and on their directions. And Tommy TV is a very good example of this, just so you can wrap your head around it. But when we started Tommy TV, we looked at a club and started a student club, and then we started a student class, and we want to make it a career strand pathway. So there would be certain classes that kids would enroll in if they have that interest in that talent, and then at graduation, they would be ready to either earn or learn in that field. So in conjunction with that, there's several things that tie together. We needed social emotional counseling in the schools to address kid needs, and we needed academic counselors to program for kids. And our academic counselors were bogged down helping social emotional. One episode that's demanding of a student could take 11 hours to sort through. So now that we have social emotional counselors in place, we're getting guidance counselors focused on what we want them to do. And the proposal at the high school is to have one tied per grade level. And so Jeb, our freshman year counselor, has created an online student portfolio system, and it's just amazing. So what we're going to do next year is we're going to have the advisory period in the day for students. Currently, students can be dismissed early if they have behavior in attendance that warrants it. That's going to be removed because we need those students to be able to work with counselors. And so what this portfolio does is our certain tasks that are required at freshman year. So they're all plugged in here, and the kids load their information, and it's an online portfolio system, and it changes per grade level, but the outcome's phenomenal. The outcome is job applications, letters of recommendation, resumes, scholarships, and college application. And that's where we want kids to go. So I'm really excited to see this starting to take shape, and that it's going to coordinate with the course catalog, and it's going to coordinate with the work that we do with Lincolnland and dual credit and some of the other opportunities that we have in place for students. So, Mr. Jeb, I'm really proud of you for taking this paper portfolio we worked through and creating a document that's dynamic across the grade levels, and I expect it to just get better, but it's pretty amazing. We've got Lakin Poozy here, and Lakin is going to just give you a brief update from Central School, her tiny tornadoes.
So I think we're going to get out to this, this, Lakin here, who calls us up.
Can't hear you online.
Can't hear you.
What?
Can't hear you online.
Okay, hold on. Okay. So I gave you a handout, just like a brief overview of our program, and I know you guys have heard me talk a few times about our program. So right now, screening is open, so I think that's something that we want you guys to know and the community to know, is that we're getting a lot of calls, which we're going to start advertising this week. But when is screening? When is screening? Our screening process is always open. Even if we have full capacity, we're always screening and starting a waiting list. We use weighted eligibility, so there, like, there's at-risk factors, and those children are given priority. We try to serve all of the students, though, everybody that comes to us. But screening is open, and we currently have spots for this year, and then we're going to start advertising this week for screening for next year. So anybody that's interested in getting their child enrolled for next year can do that, and we also have openings now. So just some things that we've been doing. Community members have been reading books for us to send out to our kids, and the families have really loved that. Also, if anybody wants to sign up to do that, email me. They love it. It's, we've had the mayor, Mr. Pittsman is also going to do it for us. We've had some dentists in town, some other community members. So that's been really fun. That's one thing that I think we've been really missing is the family involvement, so we do a lot of, a lot of family events, and that hasn't been able to happen this year. So we're trying to find creative ways to do that, but we're really excited to restart that next year. The kids are really starting to interact a lot more. We've started a peer buddy system, so we've been social distancing, but it's really hard when they're three and four and five. They just want to interact, they just want to be around each other. So we've really, in the last couple of weeks, seen the kids kind of come out of their shells and interact with their peers, and it's been great. So we're really thankful for that. And then when I asked the teachers what they wanted me to talk about, if there was anything they wanted me to address with you guys, they just said that they're really thankful for the parents and the community. We really haven't had a lot of difficulties or a lot of complaints. I mean, I know it's been a struggle for a lot of people, and our families have just worked really well with us, and they're partnering in their kids' learning in a very different way than they've had to ever, and we're just really appreciative of all of the families, and we're really excited to get back to a more normal state of family involvement. So, and if anybody has any questions, I can answer questions, or you can always email me or call and let us know. And if you know any three or four-year-olds, send them our way to get screened.
Thank you, Ms. P. The next school we've got is North School, and they're working on a kindergarten roundup, and they're looking at either April 12th or 19th. But they're looking at doing registration through packet and then having appointments made for families to bring those in. Anything to contribute on that, or is that just pretty much where we are? You can?
So last year, we didn't get to have kindergarten registration ahead of time, and it created a nightmare when it came time for August registration and trying to figure out numbers. And we were kind of last minute deciding, did we even need an extra kindergarten teacher? So I'd like to go back to the old way that we did it, like in April, we run a kindergarten registration. But we're going to do it a little bit differently just to avoid congregation. So we're going to create folders that we're going to take to all the preschools in town that have like a keep-for-your-record side and then a return to your preschool, and then collect that stuff at the preschools, get it entered into Skyward, and then send back Skyward usernames and passwords to the families so that when it comes time for online registration that they have that information. And then we're going to do an appointment only, probably just one date. We're going to see how many we have, and we may have to open it up to another date, but just an appointment only for those people who have not sent their children to a preschool here in town and wouldn't have access to the registration packets, rather than just everybody come in and register. It's just very helpful to get all that stuff into Skyward and plan, you know, get our plans. I know numbers change a little bit, but this at least helps us decide, you know, what our class sizes are going to be and if we're going to need extra personnel. So hopefully, this will work out this year. Any questions?
Thank you very much. It's exciting to hear about kindergarten roundup and preschool screening. So with that being said, we're working on a staffing plan, so we'll have that to you in April, and what we predict that we're going to need for next year. So that's exciting to start talking about those plans. On the fiscal prediction, we're looking at flat funding up to about a 5% decrease for fiscal year '22, and that's, of course, state contribution, and perhaps even a 10% decrease the year beyond. So we're still going to watch, we are still working through the pandemic. We're going to continue to watch and see what goes on with our dollars coming in. With our special education, our NPT withdrawal process, the response is due back to us from NPT by the 16th. So they just called an emergency meeting, a special meeting, so that'll be happening here on the 11th. And I will continue to keep you appraised of the response from those two districts on our request to negotiate a withdrawal from the co-op. Then the next thing that's important to know is that we are working on renegotiating energy contracts. And as you know, you bid out energy for a three-year period of time, and that created some problems here in our district during the blizzard week, where we had to not bring kids on campus those four hours on that Thursday to watch the thermes. So we've got a volunteer from the community, DJ Kennedy, who was an administrator for Ameren, has volunteered to join my committee to review. So we have all of our usage reports and all of the contracts, and then we're going to take a look across the state at what vendors offer services. The School Board Association has a team dedicated to it, so that's going to be one of the first calls that I make, but we'll just look at what the different contract options are and bring those forth to you. And generally, you contract out for about a three-year period of time. But we are not interested in that therm overage cost ever again affecting the business in our district and the health of the district.
Do you have anything else that you wanted to add in your communications?
I can't imagine.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Van Haas, a second?
Second.
Chris Marburger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.